We're able to make it tonight, but fortunately we do have a forum. And administrators are present. The first order of business that we're going to do today is reports and presentations to the board. Dr. Ellis is here from the foundation, the Community Foundation.
With a check.
You're always welcome.
I like checks.
So this is a check for $50,000, Community Foundation from the Cleopurdian Endowment Fund for early childhood and families. So this is per the request that was approved by the board. And then dependent upon fulfillment of the expectations, then there's the second installment, the second semester. So we appreciate the great work you do and I'm looking forward to hearing the presentation from the preschool teachers as well.
Dr. Ellis, it's wonderful to have you here and thank you very much. The people at Central Lake will remember this forever, no matter what.
And they won't be out until all the folks coming forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And following that, the presentation by the preschool teachers, Josie Draper and Tricia Fries.
We have given them very much.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Josie Draper, Mrs. Fries. Tricia is actually on a home visit right now, she'll probably be stepping in shortly. I just got back from some and that's what we're doing this week. We're getting our classrooms ready and doing our home visits so that the families and the children can meet us before coming into the classroom and feeling more comfortable. And then next week we have an open house on Tuesday and we get kids on Wednesday. So our open house is just, the families can come in at what time works best for them and visit the classroom, see it set up. The kids can get comfortable, explore some of the toys and get used to the classroom. And actually, Mrs. Fries is here too.
Just got out of the home visit.
Yes. And she doesn't know what I've talked about, so I will finish and then... And we're excited for this year. We have a lot of great ideas and are looking forward to... And that's where I guess, I don't know what's been explained in... I'm the three-year-old's classroom teacher and this phase is the four-year-old. So it's awesome that ages are split this year because we can really focus on the kindergarten readiness for those four-year-olds and the three-year-olds. We can really get them going and get a nice start for them.
Did you talk about home visits at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we've been on...
Okay.
Is there any questions for us?
How many people do we have signed up for?
My room has 18 right now, so we're at our max in my four-year-old room.
And then I have 13 and I could still get technically seven because my room is licensed for 20. And it's a one to 10 ratio at mine age.
And mine's one to eight.
Because she's GSRP.
We got a, I think we got, or Shelley got a call that we may have another one coming. So I think you may be 14 now.
I figure I get, I mean, we don't have, this way we don't, we won't be turning anyone away either. We're having my classroom, having a field and stuff.
Did we have to... Did we have to turn any four-year-olds away?
Not that I know of. I don't think so. I think we just reached our max right when we were...
I was going to ask a similar question. If you've got more four-year-olds, would they be turned away or could they go in the three-year-old's room? How does that work?
They can easily go in the three-year-old's room. Because last year we were combined, we were three and four-year-olds. So it's not a, I mean, they easily do, I mean, it's not a problem. And we would probably try to take the younger fours just because if they are missing the cutoff for next year, then they're having a new teacher each year. So it might be, it'll be probably a little more beneficial, but at the same time, in Head Start, they have the same teacher for two years as well, so it's not good. It'll still get great.
Are there any other questions?
Is there any classroom supplies that you need or anything like that since we're opening up?
Oh, yeah.
You want to open them?
You're welcome to stop in at the rooms, but currently we are, we are kind of starting the year with one classroom worth of furniture. We are going to make it work. We have licensing coming in, so we're going to see how that goes and then we're going to work on getting some more furniture. We've made some connections and we're working on it, so it's, I mean...
And we've split up that set so that I have some and she has some in her room and we're supplementing the tables at this point. But eventually we are definitely going to need some more things. And as an ongoing basis, we're going to need to, you know, get lots of little things here and there. Because in preschool, at that developmental age, they're definitely using a lot of manipulatives. They need a lot of real-world exposure to items and things like that. So as we go, we will probably be asking them for some things, so... And we're in constant contact with, with them.
Wonderful. I have a question.
Well, while you're thinking about it, I just want to say as well personally, I'm really excited for this opportunity. I've been working in the title program, which is also a great program and I loved it and I'm very proud of that program. But this is a wonderful transition for me and I'm really excited to be working with this age group. And I really believe that this is the age group that you sometimes can make a kid absolutely love school and it carries through. It's also for me, I have both a teaching degree and a specialty in early childhood ed, but I'm also a social worker. And it is the perfect age to do early intervention with children and families and provide resources and provide outlets for questions and things like that. So I'm just really excited personally.
I remember what the question was.
Okay.
Have you had the opportunity to visit exemplary programs in the state?
Not yet.
Because as a former teacher, I think that's a, you know, in terms of getting ideas and things, that's an absolute wonderful thing to do.
We do have...
Will there be an opportunity for that?
Yes. We've talked about going to Pelston, they have a good program up there and we have kind of a connection there. So we've talked about doing that at some point this year. And hopefully we would be able to find some more opportunities for that in other places. And if you hear about anything else that you want to refer us to, that would certainly be great.
Yes.
I'd like to ask what the preschool program was before the advent of this gift.
Yeah.
And what the budget is per year? Is it covering their salaries, salaries plus classroom?
Great question. I'm going to let Ben speak to that if you will.
Which part of it? Last year we had two classrooms. We had a Head Start classroom and a preschool classroom. And both were three and four-year-old combined. Both were supervised and run by the NMCAA. This year, we have moved from two classrooms to three. So we've added a classroom, so we're expanding opportunities. Really, there's 18 to 20 more slots over the 36 that we had last year, so up to 54 or 56, depending on which room you're counting.
So one of them is teaching two sessions?
No, one of them's capped at 18, one's capped at 20, so...
Okay, so that, where's the third class?
The Head Start.
Head Start.
Oh, I see.
That room's still running. So we've added, what we've done is we've split off the preschool side and hired our own preschool staff for the two classrooms. And we've hired the three teacher assistants as well. So we have five employees now in the preschool side. And the Head Start has, I believe, is it three and a half, three and then a half type employee? They have their teachers and two and a half aides. So we have three teachers, the Head Start teacher, the two preschool teachers who are here tonight, and then the teacher assistants and the cafeteria transition worker. Who will be taking care of programming for those three rooms. And our staff, meaning Principal Lorenzi, and our teachers and teacher assistants will be working in close proximity with and planning with the Head Start staff to make sure that we're providing a real continuous service for our kids, three and four and even all the way up to young fives getting ready to start kindergarten. One, one nice add on this year, Head Start due to some funding cuts federally, is running all their programs or was forced to run all their programs until noon only. And so we're going to be able to support this Head Start room from noon until three. So we're providing some additional funding to make sure it's a full-day program as well. We did not want to have students in the preschool environment departing at noon and then others staying all the way through the day. In fairness to, you know, what's best for all kids. It was really important to us as we talked about it at the board level and as we budgeted for it and began to plan for it, to really make sure we had three full, full-day programs, so...
And the budget, is there, have you arrived at a yearly amount that's coming from the grant that you have?
No. This, this year's amount, we have some funding that's coming from GSRP, of course. Head Start is funded through the NMCAA. And then we have received the first installment of the first half of the grant that I've requested to take care of the operation of that third classroom for this school year. And really, this, this is our first foray, not first, but it's our first since 2007, foray back into running the preschool as a school district. Up until 2007, the board and the school administration did manage the preschool room in conjunction with Head Start. They had an early, I think, an early Start room as well. But for a period of years, it's really been kind of a hands-off program that NMCAA's done a nice job of running. We're excited to have some real direct connection now. And Trish and Josie both, you know, being veterans, Josie was in the program last year and now she's our employee and Trish has worked here for years. It's nice that we have some continuity as we begin to structure that curriculum and scaffold the appropriate levels for our students to work their way up, so... I think the sky's the limit, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, welcome to the preschool program. Not Central Lake.
Thank you.
I have one other question. Is the preschool program going to be open for people to visit, you know, during the, during the school days?
Sure, of course. Yeah. Any of you are welcome?
You may not be able to leave at the end of the day though, which is...
I think on this week there is.
We're going to have to reach out and help it out, so...
Yeah, if you show up this week, we might put you to work moving around cleaning bits, but yes, after next week, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the preschool, oh, next one we just did, the high school. The Three Lakes Association has a presentation for us. And this is, is it Tenica?
Tenica.
Tenica, Tenica Witt. And I'm going to let you kind of introduce yourself as you go along. And tell us about the program and...
Do you want to start right with the PowerPoint?
Yes.
I'll make sure I turn it on. Do you want to catch maybe one of those lights back there?
Do I have to do it in full screen, make it full screen on there?
I hope so, I think you're going to be okay.
I think you do.
Sheldon, do you mind making it bigger and better? I can't see what she's seeing in there, so...
I was one of the interns with Sabbath Thabo and Annika Stolt, they aren't here, and Ashley Robbins, who is also here. And they were from other schools, you can see Alkrapin, Mansalona. We, we did, did testing and did more on the current data regarding the clam river plume. We inventoried over 20 road ends to monitor waterway runoff erosion. We studied macroinvertebrates to determine the health of Moray Creek. And we also staffed a booth at the fair for public education. This is a picture of the clam river plume. It's been here for years and years and years and years. We took water samples because there's some theories that the, that the color might come from phytoplankton that was from sewage tank seepage into the river. And so we took water samples and discovered that the water quality assessments fall within ranges expected for amesotrophic lake. Amesotrophic lake is a muddy lake, but not a muddy lake so muddy and silted up that it's die. After looking at our data, we believe the origin of the plume is due to an abundance of algae or phytoplankton. There's also a different person on the board who thinks that it's from tannic acid from the swamp that also is putting these colors in there. And there's no point source for the nutrients to produce the plume, so it's not really, really obvious that it's coming from somebody's house. That was the data that we found. The total phosphorus, who were sampling that because that's what causes the phytoplankton blooms. And it's sort of even, I think. At Butches it's pretty high and then it gets really low towards Lake. And then a little bit higher at Brass River, higher up the chain. But it's really interesting, really, really high at Butches Marina. We also did a green belt, the green belt project in which we, we went to lots of road ends and we surveyed them and we looked at how much erosion there was, how high the banks were, what kind of area it was. With this one, we decided to do this project because you can see that there's a road on one side and then you can see on the next, there's part of it, you can almost see. There's gravel road on the other side. And then on the fourth side, there's a, there's the boat ramp. And then there's that, that, and then there's that just sticking into the water. And there was erosion where the water had lapped up underneath the planks that are on the edging. You can see the edging by where we're standing. They had lapped up underneath there and pulled the dirt out from underneath there with erosion. We could cut out all the grass and sod. They, actually the director and the lady who we were working with from Blooming Buddies had used rotor till, to rotor till the entire area for several hours. It was a lot of work, according to them. We put down an erosion plank, made out of coconut, which is interesting to work with. It's called coir. We planted native vegetation, so it's all native, all from this area. And the stuff along the edges is plants that were no ground and long, deep fibrous root systems that would help erosion. And they were planted specially. I think she might have even put it through a special program. This is the macroinvertebrate studies. We, they're used to, to level stream, measure the level of stream health and by that, according to the MI Corp system. The results from Moray Creek evaluation revealed the good condition of the stream. That was our first time sampling, officially sampling macroinvertebrates. I had done it a week earlier, but that wasn't very official. The Dean Branson jumped off the pontoon with the net and then got stuck in the mud. And then we decided that wasn't such a good idea, so we sampled it from onboard the boat. It didn't work very well.
That might affect mud levels of the water.
And we had done sampling before that. In this evaluation, we collected insects, cataloged them and scored them according to the MI Corp system. If you don't know what that is, we went to the stream with mud boots and we stepped in the stream, we got the mud to stir up the mud because that's where the insects live. And we did it in the gravel and by trees and leaves and all sorts of places. And then we had nets, special bug nets that had really fine mesh that we, we picked them up and we took them away. And cataloged them, nice good trace. This is the front and back side of that evaluation sheet. On the right side, you can see that there's a list of insects and they're, they're spaced by sensitive, somewhat tolerant and tolerant species. The sensitive species are species that any sort of pollution that kills them. And, and, yeah. And so it gives a higher score for the more sensitive species than the less sensitive species. It's actually an official water thing, quality test sheet. And TLA's education outreach effort is a part of the TLA's mission to preserve, protect and improve the environmental quality of the elk river for a chain of lakes watershed, especially towards Lake Clam Lake and Bel Air for all generations. That's part of their mission statement. We went to the fair and we were at a booth. We had a fish tank with minnows in it and fish shelters in it. And that was our demonstration of effectiveness of fish shelter. Most of the minnows went immediately and hid inside the crate fish shelter, which shows what they're good for. We had native and non-native milk oil species and we had them in the fish tank and showed them. And we also had them in samples on them. We also had chara, which is another native species. We had macroinvertebrate samples that we got from the river down the hill and also from Leslie Myers' house, that she has a river buyer house. And we brought them there. And a lot of people went, children went, poked around in the mud and saw all sorts of things. And even some of the more sensitive species were in there, which is pretty good, amazing. Along with those activities, we had a table floral of information, printed materials, boat watershed protection, green belts, TLA, basic species, fish shelters, et cetera. And they also had a raffle for a nature awfully game, it's like Monopoly for the chain of lakes that we had there too, besides that. TLA, so I can deal with the booth at the three-day fair. Other education programs are the high school internship program, I was in it, adult education evenings, science education outreach program, quarterly newsletters, a website and Facebook. This, the plume emanating from the clam river, it doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be quite much as pollution as just, it's there because that's what lives around it and that's what it causes, natural sources. From the swamp or just from phytoplankton that's just in the river just because. And it's been bigger before by a postcard at, at the other meeting, the Three Lakes Association meeting. There was a guy who had a postcard from the 60s with the same thing. And in that postcard, it was, the plume is bigger and darker than it is now. So this plume's been around for a long time. And the conclusion is, we don't need to monitor it every day. And the green belt at Butches, it's a demonstration project for the public to get people talking about it and get more people to put those in their shorelines. Because most people just have lawn right down to the edge of the, edge of the lake. And then you got all the fertilizers and glass clippings and herbicides and whatever else they put on the wall and straight in the lake, which is not good. Causes algae blooms and nastiness. And Moray Creek, we never monitored it before and it's downstream from Channing Creek Resorts, which is a major area that causes pollution. It's, and, oh, and it's from the lots of sand and sediment going into it too. It was, it was good level, healthy levels of macroinvertebrates and that's, that's good. And then sampling should be continued. Educational programs, yeah, should be continued and maybe even expanded because TLA makes a handout in one of their experience. These are acknowledgements, those are all those people who helped us. And that picture, there's our airplane pilot who took us in an airplane during the fair week and showed us the clam river plume from the air. You can see it from the air, which is neat. And that's the end.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Is Central Lake going to participate in this every year?
I know we're... Always, always participate?
Oh.
I'm the education chairman for Three Lakes Association and you'd think I'd know the answers. But this particular part of the program is usually overseen by our executive director. And that used to be Norton Brettz, who's a scientist himself. And now Leslie Myers, who I think you've probably seen, is our new executive director. And she and Becky Norris were the two people in charge of the girls this year. All four of the interns were girls, which was nice. They were able to do some women's types, women in science types activities in addition to the projects that they picked. And Central Lake is always welcome to, to have stu-, thank you, have students approach us and apply. In the spring, Leslie will come around and talk to the two science, probably physics and biology or whoever. Talks to those classes and talks up the program. And of course, Tenica will be talking up the program too, you know, having been through it, as was her older sister, Wilhelmina, and her brother. Was that last year? Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Okay. So, you know, word gets around and we, this year we had one student from Elk Rapids, one from Mansalona, one from Bel Air and one from Central Lake. And we've had boys and girls over the years in whatever combinations, but we have never had, let me turn that around. We have always had the best kids participate in this. Their interest is there by the very fact that they apply. And they're the type of students who are interested in science and will go the extra mile and put in a lot of effort. And so yes, Central Lake is always more than welcome to have a student join us or more than once even.
That was going to be my question, is there a limit per school within the county?
I think if we go around seven, the executive director begins to get a little nervous about, you know, having enough, enough for, to keep that many people busy. But four is perfect, five is perfect, six, and, you know, then, that's really at their discretion, but... We haven't had a whole lot of years when we, when the number has been a concern. And I think we've always been able to accommodate everybody who wanted to apply. I have a letter here to present to the school board, Mr. Williams, which confirms that Tenica participated in this and met all requirements that were asked of her. And has now earned a half a credit of environmental science studies. So that's for you. And can you read the content of the letter if the group would like to, kind of explains a little bit of what went on?
It says, "Please accept this letter as confirmation that Tenica has completed all the required tasks associated with her 2013 summer high school internship, Three Lakes Association. Tenica has participated with three other students this summer. And the internship included over 60 hours of research, training and sampling of the Elk River Chain of Lakes watershed. For the past nine years, the interns have prepared a final report based on their experience. As technology is changing the way we seek information, it would determine that this year, all intern work will become part of our website as specific content, not a report. Additional information will be linked to other portions of our website as well as external sites. And we'll assess how well this new method of presentation works over the next six months. The website is currently being modified to appropriately display their work and will be ready for review by September 16th at threelakes.com. Three Lakes Association commends Central Lake Public Schools' commitment to our internship program through the awarding of academic credit to participants. It would be appropriate to update Tenica's transcript to reflect the one-half credit of environmental studies." Thank you so much. And I know there's no better way than to learn something than to do it. Get out and get your hands dirty and get involved and sample and calculate and think about and theorize and all those things, so... Congratulations, I'm sure you earned a great deal. Nice job.
One thing I thought of while you were reading the letter, Three Lakes is Torch, Bel Air and Clam. And that, that's not intermediate, which is right out your back door, but it's all part of the same chain. So our science program invites students from all the districts that border on the Three Lakes and, and then Central Lake because, you know, you're kind of located in the heart of everything. So intermediate lake is very much a part of what we are trying to improve and keep at the level that it's at now with our project, so that's a perfect fit.
Very good.
Okay.
One last question, what do you want to study in college?
I don't know yet.
But are you maybe interested in science more?
Well, science, kind of, but then other times, no.
Well, sometimes learning what you like and also what you don't like is, is really important. And so take, take little things away from this experience, I'm sure. Nice job.
Again, thank you. Next is our homecoming update.
Kind of feel a little, you know, follow that. I'm not going to sound that intelligent by the way. It's all about fun and clicks now. Homecoming is Friday, September 27th, that is the homecoming game, festivities, crowning of the king and queen, all of that. But it does really start sooner than that. We're going to be doing some of the same things that we've done in the past. We're going to have our powder puff football game. There'll be two practices for the girls. We have our football players coach the girls. Our football coaches are the refs, not always as fair as we would say. And they have two practices, we have a game, that's Wednesday. What we're adding to that event is we are now adding a bonfire that will follow the football, the, the powder puff football game. And I do believe that Sports Boosters is working on something else to go along with that. So that's something new this year. We will do our parade downtown at 5:00, like we've always done, starting at the Pelican and working our way... starting at the Pelican and working our way south. We'll have our pep assembly, as we always do here at the school. The dance, which is more run by student council, is on Saturday. The other thing that we are adding is we are trying to get our community involved a little bit. And the cheerleaders just today, some of who are with me today, delivered letters to the businesses downtown. And Betsy, we'll be out to bring one to you too.
Yes.
We're calling it the Fall and Football Festival. We are asking the businesses to decorate, and we have it done by the twenty-second, which is the week of homecoming, to be a part of Trojan Pride, Spirit of Central Lake, and be decorated for our parade. We are going to judge those businesses, right? We gave them a criteria that they would be judged by, and the winner will receive a traveling plaque that they will get to host for a year until the following homecoming, and then so on and so forth. So we're adding that, trying to get the community involved. Float building hit rock bottom, I believe, last year with shopping carts. That's just my personal thoughts, so I'm not speaking for a lot of people, but shopping carts coming through town was a shock to many. I totally understand why the senior class of last year chose to do that, kind of pushed for that. But after comments from the community, we are now moving away from shopping carts. And I'm going back to float building, as it was when I was in school. We are going to be doing float building, starting the week before homecoming week, and then into homecoming week at homes. We have had some parents graciously donate their garages to work on these. We've got drivers, we have trailers, and they will work on their floats throughout the week and a half or so and be a part of the parade. So that's changed a little bit from what it was last year with the shopping carts that I personally don't ever want to see go through the homecoming parade again. So, trying to think if there's anything else that we are doing that's new, or... The cheerleaders are planning some events each day at school. There's always the homecoming pep assembly, but they're gonna try to do like, how much candy, guess how much candy's in a jar one day? Another day might be a trivia question. A bubble gum blowing contest one day at lunch. So these are things that they're gonna do at lunch to just kind of get the kids hyped up for Spirit Week. So that's, that's pretty much it. So there's some new things coming with, with homecoming that we hope will, we'll be able to continue, the bonfire, the Fall and Football Festival, and float building. Did I miss anything, guys? Any questions?
Where's the bonfire gonna be, in the middle of the football field?
No, exactly, the football coach would like that, or, you know, Mr. Williams. We're, I'm meeting with Quinn and Bill Chapman to kind of decide a spot that's off, you know? So it's not gonna be close to the grass or anything like that. They, the fire department has already volunteered to come and extinguish it. I've also got a call in to someone to actually completely remove it from the parking lot area before Friday's game.
So it will be right down there?
Yeah, so it'll kind of be, I'm guessing somewhere in the area between the football field, the Little League field, somewhere, somewhere in there.
It's a nice flat, wide open area.
Yep, yep. And we've got the speaker system, you know, there for music and things like that. So hopefully it'll be, we'll put some activities with it, but hopefully it'll be a good turnout. So we're gonna be advertising locally, announcements, newspaper, businesses here in the next few days, all the events, so that we get good participation.
Very cool.
Very nice.
I can see a community involved like that, that's a good idea.
So the bonfire's for everyone?
Mm-hmm, yeah, for the community, yeah. Yeah, I, I really wanted to, to, you know, especially when community members had said, "Wow, yeah, yeah, shopping carts in the parade."
Now the shopping cart thing, 'cause that was like up and coming at all those colleges.
Oh, yeah, that was, yeah, that was supposed to be really, I'm like, really, what college are they going to? It's really, she's not kidding, but, you know, the community was like, you know, I'd help, I'd help, I said, "Well, you just said you'd help, so guess what? I'm knocking on doors this summer," said, "You said you'd help, so, hey, how about, you know..." And then we thought, what's another way to really get our town decorated when the other team comes into town, to really see we're on board, supportive, decorate our community and get our businesses involved?
So the bonfire's gonna be before the game?
After the game.
After the game, okay.
They don't buy all those powder puff.
They had a bonfire year.
Yeah, they used-
And a big snake walk through town?
I was thinking the snake walk.
Oh, I didn't know that, maybe we should have a snake walk at the football field.
I mean, we'd, we'd start up at the old, right, or the old, where the baseball field is now.
Oh, yeah.
And everyone would hold on to each other and we'd go down to the blocks.
Really?
And cheers. It was, um-
Yeah, that would be, yeah. That's what, that's what we want, we wanna bring back some of those old traditions. Those were the, those were the fun, fun things, so. Any other questions? All right, that's all.
Thank you, we support organizing all that.
Thank you.
It's thanks to the cheerleaders.
Yeah, I, my cheerleaders are awesome. They're, they were downtown knocking on doors, and they even went to the drive-through at the, at the bank.
Wait, these are who are the cheerleaders?
Oh, the ones we have here today, I actually have ten. So we had, on the, we have Alexis Michaels. Next to her is Andy Schaefer.
Hi.
And then next to her is Kaylee Cuck, she's one of my two seniors. She's also doing a little-
We have three, we have three.
Oh, and three, no, because we have Clarisha, the new exchange student, just joined today. So after today, I hope she comes back, because, although she got to eat ice cream. I think, went to the fudgies and came out eating ice cream. I'm like, that should have maybe been the last, uh, middle stop. So, but yeah, and I have seven other girls, they, they're awesome. They really did a good job this year.
Girls, when you went to the businesses, did you have a positive reaction?
Kind of. Some of them were like, "Okay," and then I was like, "Okay."
Yeah, I've already had two people say that they were doing it, because, I mean, and-
Well, and I wonder too, maybe if, if the cheerleaders are able to help them decorate.
Yeah, we've been windows for years, so.
Are you asking them to do any kind of theme, or is it just?
Well, that's why we put with fall, sorry, fall is football, so we got scarecrows, hay, any, you know, any of the, like, the fall decorations that you would do, and then aim it towards football also, so.
I didn't listen to that part.
That's okay. Yeah, so hopefully it'll be a good turnout, it's first year, so.
Sounds like a good time.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, that's what I'm hoping for. All right, well, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us, all right.
Old business, I don't think we had any, really? And I guess the public comment, which, do you have any old business you'd like to bring up? That's good too.
I'm just curious where the numbers are, now that we're in school. Up, down?
Three hundred and fifteen, down three from projected, down twenty-three from last year. We projected three sixteen, and as of today, we're three thirteen.
You look like you almost want to say something. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of the board on August twelfth and a special meeting on August twenty-eighth. Has anyone had a chance to look at it? Okay, Greg is making the motion. Supported by Melanie. Is there any discussion, were there any discrepancies, or? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? The motion is carried. Boy, we're moving through this agenda quickly. The committee reports, we have none, we have had no committee meetings lately.
We will have by the next meeting, though, because in the next week or so, when I can get Greg and Keith and Sarah together, I know Sarah's schedule's pretty busy, we'll be meeting to do the scheduling worldview. So we will have a report in the next week.
Has anyone had a chance to look at the expenditure log? Any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the August bills. Motion. Tracy?
Beth.
And Betsy? Thank you, is there any, anything else to do with the bills? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is carried. And moving down to action items. We have some new hires that we need to approve. The first one is, I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Pam Beckering for the Twenty-First Century Program Coordinator position. And we have a letter of recommendation here, and I, I, she's here. And Shelley, would you like to tell us something?
This is Pam Beckering, she comes to us from Elk Rapids. She's a special educator, and she, I would say, is a master teacher. She's been great for our program, we're very excited to have her. She's done some program coordinating for her church, and we're just glad to have her. She's always smiling and energetic and ready to go, so.
Thanks, yeah.
Pam, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'm just very happy to be here.
Very happy to have you.
Thanks.
I would entertain a motion to hire Pam.
I'll make that one.
And I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Then Pam, you are part of our staff now.
Thank you very much.
Position of Title One Coordinator? No. Yeah, Title One Teacher, is that also a coordinator?
Title One Teacher, she's like our Title One Specialist, K-two Sally Henry. We're glad to have her, she's also from Elk Rapids. She's been a substitute teacher and a TA in their system, and we're really glad to have her. She and Donovan have jumped right in with our Title One stuff, and knocking on my door, can we this, and can we that, and wanting to get rolling with some iPad tools to use with some Title Let stuff. So we're very glad to have her as well, so, good stuff.
Thank you, do you have anything you'd like to add, then?
Just like Pam, I'm really excited to be part of your community, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful year.
Very good. I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Sally Henry.
Motion.
Right, Betsy?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is carried. Welcome to our staff. Next is the, the hire of Kathan Wright for the position of Preschool Teacher Assistant in the Central Lake Early Childhood Center Preschool Program. And Kathan is not here right now, but Shelley, would you like to tell us about it?
Yeah, she's coming to us, she's worked in, in Bel Air, their school system, and she's coming to us now from the bank. And she's really excited to be here, she's worked with early childhood and with education. She's very excited to be part of our team, and we're glad to have her, so. She'll be working with our three-year-olds program, so she'll be working with Josie.
Wonderful. Anything anybody has to add? Then I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Kathan Wright. Melanie?
Second.
And Betsy? Thank you. All those in favor of hiring Kathan Wright?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? And she is hired, thank you very much. I think it's wonderful that we have so many positions available. It's really, it's a sign of the, the health of our student system, I think. Our next one is to approve the hire of-
Trina.
Trina Kelly?
Yep.
For the position of Teacher Assistant in the K-one classrooms.
Yep, Trina's coming to us from Ellsworth, she's been a TA there, and they're Title One in their early education program. We're really excited, we have her in the K-one program, working right side by side with Carrie and Bridgette and Ginger. She's also helping us out with recess and in the lunchroom. She's had some great ideas and suggestions for the cafeteria and the lunchroom, and, and we're really glad to have her on board, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's great that we, we're, we're gathering people from all around and getting ideas from different schools.
Oh, I love that we're friends, so, good stuff.
Consider a motion to approve the hire of Trina Kelly.
I'll make a motion.
Greg?
We're all supporting.
Thank you very much, and all those in favor of hiring Trina Kelly? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? You are unanimously hired.
Thank you.
The last one that we have is, I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Nicole Corr for the position of Preschool Teacher Assistant.
Nicole's a graduate of Central Lake. She has worked at Traverse State Public Schools for the last few years, and she lives here in Tom. She's really excited to be back with us, she's going to be Preschool Assistant in the four-year-old classroom, so we're glad to have her.
Very good. I would consider a motion to hire Nicole Corr.
I'll make a motion.
Tracy?
Second.
And Betsy? All those in favor of hiring Nicole Corr, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Nicole is hired. Has she been in also, too?
Has she been in?
Yes.
Yeah, she's been in Elk Rapids.
So to understand this, then, for the four-year-old room, we have a teacher and an aide.
A teacher and two aides.
And two aides?
Since that Susan Barry, we introduced her last board meeting?
Last board meeting.
Yeah, last board meeting, yep. We have two aides, that is a combination of a preschool and a GSRP classroom. So their number, student, student teacher ratio is a little, a little different then, so their max is eighteen.
Okay, and then in the three-year-old room?
We currently have a teacher and an aide, our numbers right now are at thirteen. So it's six and seven per adult, so.
And in the Head Start program?
There is a teacher, two aides, and a part-time aide.
And how are we doing? Would you explain how we're doing the four days and the additional day to people who may have difficulty with that?
The four days and the, and the fifth day? The four half-days?
They're, they're full days.
Well, right, but I mean, we're, we're in terms of the half, right?
Oh, the second half, right. But that wasn't what you're asking for.
No, I was, I was asking how we've made, do you explain how we've made this a full-time program?
Right now, we're at four days in both programs.
Yeah.
Four days with students in both programs, and their fifth day is their planning day.
Okay, so we're not adding that?
We, we had tried to do that, and GSRP rules prevent that. They disallow that, they force, they force the fifth day to be a day of planning for the staff, which isn't bad in any way, shape, or form, because of course the staff needs to be timed to plan, rather than, you know, planning at other times outside of the working day. It was an idea we had brainstormed and discussed, and really excited to offer, especially for folks who might need a five-day program, and to give the fifth day option. Unfortunately, the rules of both Head Start and GSRP disallow that, so.
So it's something, no, something we can look, look at as we go forward, for sure.
Thank you. Moving right on to the superintendent's report.
I'm gonna back up and give you our-
Yeah, I missed the question.
I think we had such a full, we had such a full agenda early up here.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna A, B, C, or D.
Yeah, that's, that's how I missed you. We have to have the letter next time.
I told her, I said, Ben will catch it.
Don't worry.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all good.
I just wanted to say we had a great opening day, the teachers and staff. We met out at the Torch Lake dump at all, and it was great to get off campus and do something a little bit different. We talked about the history of school improvement and our strategic plan and where we're gonna go from here. The staff began work with John Olds from Advanced Ed. He was there for a while in the morning, and then we came back here, he just had some work time, and we did staff meetings. We talked about handbooks and procedures, we went over the evaluation rubric, and each teacher got a binder, I'm just gonna pass mine around so you guys can see. I kind of put together a binder this year for everyone, it has, has all the schedules in it, has all the pertinent information that everybody's gonna need, and I'm asking them to bring it to staff meetings so that we can continue to make those working documents at, at the staff meetings. Open house for elementary and sixth grade, it went really well, we had great attendance at both of those. Ben and I have been talking about next year and possibly doing a school open house for all grades, K-twelve, where he and I grill some hot dogs, we have chips and soda, and have everybody in, so we just think that would be a neat way to go forward. We had a great first week of school. Quinn and I went to all the seminar classes at the high school, we reviewed the handbook, we get real specific with our anti-bullying policy, our weapons policy- We have a, we have a book that I'll share with you guys. It has lessons and all the expectations in there. We have a schedule. Then we have posters that we post throughout the building. They're not laminated yet, so they're not all up, but we have eight areas we teach. We teach assembly bathroom, bus, lunchroom, I can't remember the other ones because somebody's gonna ask me. Arrival, library, hallway, and I always forget the last one, I don't remember where it is. But anyway.
School rules?
So, the school rules, yep. We teach all those things. Gary Prey actually brought a bus over last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the kids get on the bus and he gives them the do's and don'ts of the bus. The kids are in the hallway and just outside the hallway for the bathroom. We actually have them come in and sit for an assembly. We work in the, in the front entryway for arrival, so we're actually teaching the behaviors in the spots that they will occur. And each teacher is assigned, oh, playgrounds, the other one, playground and recess. So they took the kids out to the playground and talked about the rules out there. So it's a really good way for all the kiddos to hear those expectations from not just their classroom teacher, but from all of us and to have it reinforced throughout the building. Let's see. We had our first pre-K12 staff meeting today. Everybody got copies of the action plans, which I gave copies to the board. It's the one with the Trojan head on it. What that does for the staff and what it'll do for you is I broke each goal of the school improvement plan down into its goal, its strategies, and then its activities. So then throughout the activities, we're able to see what the administration's role is, what the staff's role is, what the students are going to be doing. So each piece is broke down, so everyone will know what the activities are, who's responsible, what the steps are, and then the timeline for completing those. So we have four, we actually have five goals. We have one in each curricular area, so science, social studies, math, and language arts. And then we also have the behavior goal, which is part of what we did in teaching the behaviors. And so then we also have a behavior action plan and that you will find in the backup here. We talked about teacher data teams. In working with John Olds, we feel like we really need to look at data. We need to look at perception data and staff data and parent survey data and student data, assessment data, and he's going to be coming in and working with our staff. I asked today that two to three teachers from each building, staff members from each building, to join us in those teams, so I'm waiting to hear from staff to find out who's interested in those things. And the last item on my report, Patriots' Day is Wednesday, it's 9/11, and I talked to Jim Dewey and he's gonna be drawing attention to and recognizing the events that occurred long years ago, so that's what I got for the first one, so.
Wow. And that is very impressive.
I'll piggyback a quick comment on that. I have, I have heard probably from six different staff in both buildings walking around that this is the smoothest start that they can remember.
Awesome.
They're really, really, you know, nice, very praiseworthy, and having, you know, having observed other districts working with other districts, having driven a bus before, I can assure you the work you've done with the bus drivers and having Gary bring around the bus and practice offloading and what you do. Our, you know, safety always is first and foremost, and I couldn't be more happy when even our youngest riders are preschool age, three and four-year-olds, as they come off a bus, they know, do not run around in front of the bus, do not run around behind the bus, do not, you know, they, they know to step off and stay to the right side of the bus and you have to practice that.
You do.
So they understand, you know, if you drop your glove, someone gets it for you, don't lean under the bus, you know, because those unfortunate tragedies happen, you hear about that, and the way you hopefully prevent those is you train and you work on it, so.
That's right. It's all about putting those tools in their toolbox so that we can prevent some of those behaviors.
It was neat for me to see on the first day because many of them, it's their first time actually riding that bus to school and they're excited to be on the bus, but they know what to do, so.
Oh, great. Well, the other thing I think too is knowledge is power and the kids are empowered now to, to know what the behaviors are that are expected in all these different occasions. And Shelley, I'm impressed that they're all so positive. They're all things they can do, not things they can't do.
Right.
And that's, you know, kids need that to understand exactly what it is that they can do and so I'm very impressed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Echo those comments, Shelley?
Thank you.
I have just a quick bus question. How are the parents doing to drop off the kids around the bus? It looks better when we push them on once up and it doesn't seem like there's as many...
Yep. Our buses are coming about five minutes earlier and we're dropping off the elementary kiddos first, so I think that's helped, so our parents bringing kiddos are then behind the buses instead of that five-minute window there where I think parents were getting there about the same time as buses, so it's working well.
Because when we've gotten there in the morning, I don't notice it, so.
Right, right.
Shelley's doing a parent session at conferences, too.
And Shelley, I promise, next month I'll remember you.
That's okay. I was like, she forgot me.
Michelle's like, don't worry, Beth's got ya.
All right. Well, moving on then to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I think you have a couple pieces of paper there. One is short, set updates for me, but then the enrollment numbers, and that was really the first thing I wanted to talk about, so thanks for asking that question. We are at 188 in the middle school, high school, and that's grades six through 12. 125, so the numbers actually from the time I printed this, it shows 123. By the time I printed this in, the date was 125. We did have like a second grader come in and we had a first grader come in, so two from the time this was printed to the time this was printed, which was about four hours. And, you know, like I said, we heard there may be one more coming. The sheet I gave you gives a breakdown. If you flip it over on the back, you see our kindergarten numbers are at 23 and then we're at 26, 21, 22, 12, that's the small class of the fourth grade there, and 21 in fifth. So pretty consistent numbers except for that, that fourth grade is definitely a little bit low, but it's been low. And Shelley, I know, I haven't, I wasn't here, you know, five years ago when we started kindergarten, but I think that was just a low number over.
It was. It stayed the same.
Yeah, they really haven't gone much.
Between 12 and 16, up and down, pretty much, yep.
And then you flip over to the other side, six through 12, you see 24, 25, 25, 30, 33, 23, 28. And last year, the big class was the senior class of 37. So those numbers again are pretty consistent. The 10th grade bunch is the biggest in high school, 33. Questions on the numbers? These numbers don't reflect Head Start or preschool count, and those numbers are still a little bit fluid because we haven't started their programs yet. There's still some, some parent paperwork coming in.
Do we count them as part of our...
No.
Okay.
Moving on in the area of curriculum and instructional administrative updates, monitoring student achievement. We talked about this a little bit during the last meeting. I mentioned we were looking, Shelley and I were looking at NWEA. I'm also looking at Pearson School Net, which is a compare, a comparator program to the NWA. This School Net integrates with Power School. We are a Power School district. The ISD provides the Power School software to us and the other member districts. And the nice thing about School Net is it does work with the software and some online assessments that are also computer-administered and they do upload and integrate right with Power School. They do provide all grades benchmark assessment options, so it gives staff, should we choose this product, it gives staff a ready way to measure students' current level of mastery and then track them mid-year and then do an end-of-the-year assessment. This, this quote is not in yet. The NWEA quote, depending on if you purchase all subjects or just English and math and writing, can be as low as 5,000, can be as high as 8,000. It's, it's a little bit steep, so I'm definitely checking around. It is, NWA is considered a really quality product, but I am intrigued by School Net because they do integrate and are owned by the parent company of Power School, which is Pearson. And if you look nationwide, there really are only two or three major companies across the country. Pearson is probably the biggest, and so their ability to leverage some capital and build systems that integrate with systems you already own is probably second to none, so their information should arrive at my office hopefully by Wednesday of this week. Alternative ed placements. This one might take some explaining, so I'll do my best because I still don't have the final answers from the ISD. Shelley and I have been working as we do every, every year and every semester, we look very closely at our student count. Your student count, obviously, is the number of students you have in each grade added together and that's your student count. This shouldn't be that complicated, however, when a student transfers out, your student CA60, the cumulative folder of all their enrollment and their immunizations and their testing records travels with them. So when a student moves to Nebraska, you mail the file. When a student moves in from Traverse City Public Schools, they send us the file. So the CA60 follows the student, sometimes by a couple of weeks, but that's why we fax or, you know, email the paperwork so we can get the student started. When you're a student in this district and you're attending here, we have your CA60 here. When you're a student in this district and then you attend the alternative school, we have some students who from time to time attend the alternative school. Sometimes all the way through their grade placements, if it's a student with special needs in a severe and profoundly disabled program, they may be at the alternative school K-12 and Charon provides bussing for that. Sometimes we have students at the alternative school who are there for behavioral reasons or they're there by choice, they need a different learning environment. We have different alternative programs. We have one up in Harbor, we have one in Boyd City, one in Potaski, and we have the Lighthouse School, which is actually on Beaver Island. And that one is probably the most unique. Last year, we had two students that attended the Lighthouse School. Although as Shelley and I began looking at the data, they showed us with three and we disputed that because we knew we only had two. The student they were attributing to us is actually a student from a neighboring district who has been a student in a neighboring district since the fifth grade and the student's going into the 11th. And so I began to ask a lot of what I thought were very simple questions. How can you think this is our student when it's clearly a student of District X up the road and they've helped the students file and given the test? Well, that created a whole lot of other questions and we've worked with people accounting, we've been working with the state, we've been working with the ISD. I still don't have a final answer from the ISD about this, but it should be as simple as where you go, your CA60 follows. And we're finding out that in many cases, when a student leaves the home district, and it's not just this one, it's all 11 in the ISD, oftentimes the CA60 is not requested by the alternative ed placement. They leave the CA60 at the home-based school with the assumption that after a semester or after a year, the student's coming back. I understand that, however, people accounting says the CA60 follows the student. And it's really just about getting us all on the same page, so our counts are right because unfortunately, that's how counts end up off. If you're counting who's enrolled electronically and you're counting your paper files as a backup and then you transfer and once, one district has the student in the classroom and the other district counts the CA60, you can't count the student twice. So we are confident that we only had two students in the Lighthouse School, although the ISD shows three. And so the reason that's important is we want to make sure our data are accurate and that means where's the CA60? That means who gets the funding for the student? That's pretty important. And that means where do the test scores go? That's also important. So as we look at our cohorts and we try and work with school improvement data, and this is critical, Shelley and the teachers work with John Olds and Advanced Ed, we want to make sure we're working with the right data and not another test score that is attributed to us that's not our, not our student. Or the reverse. We don't want to have scores for our students attributed to other districts. So it's, it's, it's really just about fact-finding, getting all the member ISD schools on the same page. I've asked this question of ISD Superintendent Rick Devoe, who will be talking about this with the group superintendents in our meeting this Friday, and I'm confident we'll be on the same page. I just don't think right now, depending on who you call, you're gonna get the same answer. So people accounting is pretty clear on this, the CA60 follows the student. But I did want to put it there in case you heard about it because it's a little, little different, especially as we approach count day. So I will have an update for the board shortly. Shelley and Quinn and I met late last week and again this morning to talk about scheduling the first of our required 10 emergency drills. The state requires that we do six fire drills, that we do two lockdown drills and two tornado drills, and so that's total of 10. And we're gonna start, start this week and so the teachers have been notified, we'll start with fire drills in both buildings. Sometimes we give the staff a notice that we're gonna do one on this day at this time. Sometimes, of course, they're unannounced because you want to be able to, you know, plan your preparedness to be able to react and however, the first one we are announcing so the staff have an opportunity, especially our new staff, to take a look at their evacuation maps and understand where they're gonna take their students and they understand their rally points, they understand that they take their, that their attendance folders go with them so they can account for all their kids and that we don't have kids end up on a field trip on the way back from such a drill. So we've never had that happen and we don't want to start now. So in conjunction with this, we will be using the new PA system that is in this building and because we have speakers projecting up this way, which is a rally point for students in the softball field and the grass over here, and because we have students in the fire drills who evacuate that direction, we have exterior speakers that will allow Cindy Rogers with her eloquent voice to call us back in the building when we're ready to come back in from the drill. And if you can hear it at your house, let us know, maybe, I don't want that speaker to be too loud. I think Blair's up the road. We haven't, we haven't tested it yet, so it could be, it could be quite loud.
Everybody didn't evacuate from Dolan's house the other day.
Ah, okay, good, good, good. Moving on to finance and personnel. I put this on here, it's definitely not final, but it's something I'm looking at. I've seen this at Traverse City Schools. I've called the company. It's a company called Up North Media and they handle promotional messaging in schools and in businesses. They utilize an eight-and-a-half by 11 metal frame, clear plexi cover, and behind that goes laminated messages, they're anti-bullying, they're anti-tobacco or they're drug alcohol messaging, messaging promotionals from colleges and universities, those kind of things. And this content is customizable. They would allow, should we choose to do this, they would allow us to edit and preview all of the messages, so if we didn't like the way something was written, we can wordsmith the message. This company is big on, on selling promotionals, for example, to Lake Superior State or NMU or the National Guard, or they'll sponsor with, with businesses, they'll sponsor with governmental entities and have them basically sell a promotional message. And this message would be displayed, if we were to do this, over water fountains, restrooms, by the whiteboard in the, in the main hallway here and is, is a no-fee commitment. So if we were to do this, they would install the frames at no charge and then split the sponsorship proceeds with the district 50% down the road. It's, is something I just began looking into as recently as this morning, and so I haven't completed my review of board policies and our ad regs to make sure if we were interested in exploring this further, you know, we want to make sure we're in compliance with any marketing rules and regs and guidelines, but I did want the board to know that, you know, it may be, it may be a neat revenue generator. Have any of you seen these? I know you've traveled other buildings, athletics, have you seen what I'm talking about?
I have. I'm thinking.
Elk Rapids, I've seen it there. Elk Rapids is now installed in their gyms and their restrooms and their cafeterias, Traverse City, West, Central. I don't know about the middle schools, but.
Seems there are a lot of positives to it. Are there any negatives?
I think, I think you have to be careful with what you put up. You know, and I think, I think, is it a promotional or is it an advertisement? Going back to, you know, are we selling Nikes or are we saying, you know, you know, stop bullying or whatever that positive promotional message is? You know, I kind of agree. What are we gonna advertise in the school?
I don't think a lot of times they're super milked down, super watered down, but it's up, you know, I, I just don't know. I think, I need to be, the bathrooms need to be an advertisement for the colleges or the army or anything else. And the information usually is pretty kind of bottom-down, so I mean, respect others or something like that.
I don't think a lot of times they're super milked down, super watered down, that it's, you know, I just don't know.
I think I need to be, the bathrooms need to be an advertisement for the colleges, or the army, or anything else. And the information usually is pretty kind of bottomed down, so I mean, respect others or something like that. We should, of course, not, I don't think we might.
I'll bring some, I've asked this lady who I spoke with today for some images, show us some examples, so I'll make sure next time we have some to look at if words didn't move in this direction, so I'll get some pictures. And food service update, Michelle and I received our confirmation today that we did receive our six cents per meal application grant that we had submitted earlier. We're excited that this allows us to capture reimbursement, six cents per meal for each meal that qualifies as a reimbursable food service. On this topic, we had had a faculty meeting, actually, we did two, but it was really more the elementary meeting, where we began discussing, and some of the staff began discussing, not so much the lunches, but really working to make sure we have healthy snack at the end of the day. We serve, of course, we serve breakfast, we serve lunch, and then we serve snack. And I know I heard from multiple elementary staff, could we serve more grapes, or apples, or cut oranges, or cheese sticks, or yogurt, or those kind of things for that end of the day snack? And I think the answer is maybe. It's not that we're not allowed to, it's not that we can't, it's just right now it's not in budget. So it would be an increase, I know I already went over that budget last year, over by about $12,000. And so I'm cautious about adding any more to it, even though it probably would be for everyone's benefit, because it would be healthier than Doritos. The other issue is that you would have some cold storage needs to consider. Our food service staff prepares the end-of-the-day snack at eleven, they actually put those boxes together before they serve lunch. And when they're done with lunch and done with the dishes, they go, and they're off the clock. And so, those boxes that are then taken later in the day and put outside each of the classrooms in the elementary have to be kind of shelf-life stable from eleven until two-thirty or three. So milk, or cheese sticks, or yogurt, that's probably not going to be a good option. But we did begin discussing things like raisins, or dried fruits, or, you know, in addition to the juice box, you know, the dried fruit and/or something else. It seems like, and I know some of the staff were like, you know, there's a lot of goldfish, a lot of Doritos, there's lots of centigrams or teddy grams, or, and nothing wrong with those, but five days a week, you know, and so.
Is that separate funding, though, is that different?
It's all part of her food service budget, and she has to meet the same food service guidelines, she has to follow the guidelines for grains and fruits and nuts.
Yeah, I mean the list.
And everything we serve, goldfish, the centigrams, the Doritos, it's all meeting per class, so it all qualifies. Yet, the proposed items would also qualify, you just have to think about adding a labor cost, if you're going to have your staff stick around longer, or task other staff to refrigerate those items, or find additional space for refrigeration, because right now, you know, there's some things to consider, I'm not.
So is, back up there, I guess, bring me in here, is Deb doing the hiring for these, or not hiring, geez, was, purchasing for these?
Yes, yes.
Any other options besides what's on the tally sheet or whatever? Is, I guess, is there a order form?
All those other requested items are available, they just cost sometimes five to seven times.
She's got about seventy-five cents to work with for snacks.
Yeah, so like the integrant bar is.
You know, and.
No, she's done those some, but she's.
She ruled those out, she said that is the least popular item.
They won't either.
They could, yeah, yeah. And that surprised me, because personally, I kind of like those, I like them in a bar, and, you know, but I'm not seven, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I was surprised by that, but I would think raisins, and I know she's looked into, and unfortunately, one of the guidelines she has to follow, the prepackaged snacks, so you're.
You can't give them a jar of peanut butter and a tube of saltine.
So you hand them a bag of grapes, or you hand them the box of raisins, it all has to be prepackaged, which does, you know, you can't do orange wedges prepackaged, unless you want to cut them off and repackage them, and then you have a labor cost involved, so. You know, I think the sky's the limit there with our creativity, but ultimately, we do have a dollar limit too. And so, you know, I think it was a healthy discussion to have, Deb pretty quickly ruled out bananas, just because they get brown and mushy and bruised, and no one wants them when they look that way. Apples are great, but then again, you have to quarter them and eighth them, and section them up, and package them, and you can buy them pre-cut that way, but then your prospector goes up. So, she is looking into, you know, some, I know we have the prepackaged grapes right now and carrots, she is looking into celery, and she is looking into some other prepackaged vegetables that have dips.
It's kind of mushy after sitting out for three hours, string cheese.
Oh, right.
Gets kind of.
She says it's rubbery.
Yeah, it gets kind of nasty after three hours.
You can bounce it off the floor.
Oh, so you need something that sits out. Yeah, unless we delivered it at, you know, closer to snack, but then there's no one in the department.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm sorry.
No, I was going to go into the cooler thing, is there any way we can partner with other districts for renting a refrigerated unit, or any kind of, I think of a refrigerator, is there any way we can?
Is it a space issue or a?
I don't think it's a space issue, I think it's like, we'd have to, you know, deliver it at two, two fifteen, most of them have snack at two-thirty-ish.
Could you get a cooler with a reusable ice pack? And you could still deliver at the same time, and just be in a cooler?
So, in the elementaries, there is no?
Yeah. And at the end of the day, the teacher would be responsible for throwing the ice pack in the freezer, but.
Yeah, I think we've got other options, and, you know, when you have a cooler pack for every classroom, instead of just a, right now it's a box, it's a box.
I mean, then they could still pass them out at the same time.
Or maybe you could get a senior something during the, you know, the last hour to volunteer for college, for, you know, I see a volunteer.
I think some student leadership's coming to the fore, folks, that's a good thing. So, I did want to have it on here as an update, because I did want the board to know that we took a close look at it as a staff, and we decided we need to learn some more about it. I've asked Deb to go back and really explore the items that the staff had talked about, the yogurt, the apples, the raisins, the other dried fruits, or just the dried apricot or whatever. Deb is pricing those things, she's pricing the cauliflower, the broccoli, the celery, but she also knows that if you're serving cauliflower, broccoli, and celery, you're probably also needing to consider a prepackaged peanut butter or ranch dip or something, probably not, they're not going to eat broccoli trees prepackaged. I have to admit, I might not either, but I know broccoli's good for me. I'm not going to ban up here like Ronald Reagan and say that it's not, or that I don't like it, I do like it. Okay, that's enough editorial lesson. Technology updates, phone extensions in the elementary? Steve has just assigned, by repurposing, the last of, I believe, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the twenty-four available extensions, was it twenty-four?
Well, it seems to, there seem to be less, because there are twenty-five pairs of wires that connect the two buildings, but we think a few have failed, so there, if I count extensions, I seem to only be able to get to twenty-three for some reason, maybe I'm just not counting right. Anyway, it's never going to get above twenty-five, the way it is right now.
And so what that meant is we brought the third preschool room online, we needed to repurpose a phone for that classroom, obviously, it's a dedicated classroom, so we repurposed a phone from a lesser-used room, and I'm forgetting which one.
Dance.
The dance room, right. And so, the dance room's phone-lined, which, of course, the dance room sits empty all day, has now been reassigned to that third preschool room, and if, you know, just as an FYI, if we need to expand other phone coverage in that building, it's going to take more than just pulling a wire and reassigning, and it's going to take some expansion with the phone company, some additional networking, which I'm sure would not be as simple as plugging in a new one, but I appreciate you doing that, because now we've got phone coverage down there.
Not yet, but tomorrow.
The more kids are coming till the nineteenth.
Cal showed me where the wire was today.
What'd you say?
I said, Cal showed me where the wire was today.
Good. PC desktops have arrived, and are arriving, Steve is going to be installing these teaching machines and the labs over the next few days as they come in. And the nice thing about this is he can do two or three at a time as he goes down hallways, and make sure he keeps ahead of the need. So, excited to have all that in shortly. And buildings and grounds updates, there really aren't any, once again, just, I know I commented on this in August, I'll say again, hats off to all the staff, Steve included all the custodians, for taking care of the facility as well as they did. You know, we have, we have a building that is, or buildings that are older, but really, really well-kept, and things are working. Everything was cleaned, we have new carpet in one or two more rooms now in the elementary than we did. And really, hats off to all the staff that worked hard also, so, that's my update.
We are moving on into closing guest comments. You came in late, you have the opportunity.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
Yes, I have a question, a couple of weeks ago, I heard Norm Jones talking on the radio about a college fund for graduates. I'm not sure if I missed information somewhere, or will there be information about what's going on at that Central Lake graduates?
I'm glad you asked that question, because I've heard several people ask me, and.
It's something I talked about at the last board meeting, and I highlighted the five areas that Cleo and her vision had set forth for potential funding, and obviously, grant funding now that we're requesting all those funds to Dr. Ellis and his board of thirty-four individuals. The five areas are the zero to three, so that's people before preschool, the birth to three opportunity. The three of call five, which is the preschool cohort, and that's the one that we are, through Cleo's vision, charged with starting with. And so, based on the words and the grant she left to the foundation on behalf of Central Lake students and the Central Lake School District, that's where we begin, and so those are our marching orders. The third area is a broader area considered K-12 supplemental. And because it's supplemental as opposed to supplanting or replacing, supplemental would be anything we added. For example, if we added a welding elective, and we hired a teacher for that, and then bought the equipment to run the welding class, or auto tech, or agronomy, or plant botany, or anything, anything that's an add, really an addition to our programming, whether it's instructional, or staff, or it could be technology enhancements, K-12 supplemental, we brought. The fourth area would be postgraduate support, and so that would be what you just alluded to or just mentioned. Money potentially, depending on how much, would be formula-based, and that's a formula that in the last meeting I said I would have a draft before the board, my target date is Thanksgiving, to have a working draft that I have been kind of calling ideas and best practices from Kalamazoo and from Manchester, and I've recently found out that as close as Northport has a very similar, but slightly smaller version of something like this. So we do have exemplars in the state to look at, not all of them are set up this way, though, because not all of them have the language that this one does. This one's very specific from the standpoint of what's Cleo's vision, which is Central Lake first. And so, when you have that as your cornerstone, and you build your formula from that, that's where you stay. That's the fourth area. The fifth would be providing opportunities for employability and skill-building for adults even, if we wanted to explore as a district and as a community, partnering with the village, or partnering with Chamber of Commerce, partnering with Anjum County. How do we provide and survey our community for adult employability, skill-building opportunities? Maybe we open up the building, we offer night school, and then the question is, what classes do folks in the community need? If folks are underemployed or unemployed, you know, is it medical field? Medical field is a field that's growing, is it paralegal, is it real estate, who knows? I'm definitely not the workforce development expert, but we do have opportunities, that would be the fifth area, that in her vision, really, it's from birth all the way to postgraduate. You know, her mission really was attack generational poverty and support the Central Lake School District from birth all the way through the graduation and beyond, so it's an awesome challenge. It's one that right now is not primary, it's secondary, primary is that preschool. But it is critical that we begin thinking about these other areas as well. So I'm trying to, I guess, compartmentalize my time into each of those four other areas as we move forward.
Could I just make a comment on that? I think, you know, that's gotten a lot of discussion going on, and so I think I've been approached twice, and, you know, I know what you've told us, and I'm trying to do that, but the question that seems to be coming back to me is, what about my senior? Or what about my junior? Because those are the people that their kids have been here, K-12. And so they're wondering if it's going to be in time, if you will, if that's the way to put it, for their kid. So, I think if we could somehow have a way to answer that in simple, you know, it's probably not going to happen this year, or we're working on it, or Ben's working on a grant, you know, I've heard lots of different rumors going on, but I don't know, you know, I mean, I've heard as much as, well, I was told it's $10,000, you know? So, you know, where is this coming from, what do we, how do we speak to the public about?
Thank you, Tracy, that's exactly the question.
I think you've really summed up, I think you've summed up public sentiment quite well, because I've had the same question, and the nice thing about you asking it now is I can give an answer, and that answer will get further out than you and me and each of us getting the phone calls one at a time. And it's one that is going to be based on, I guess, two points of consideration. One is the formula, and one is the board approval, but really, there's two boards. There's our board, and then there's a board of thirty-four in the community foundation that has to support the formula that this district board presents. And so, we have some consideration about what's a formula, and does that formula meet Cleo's wishes? Does it take into consideration?
It happens, it's like that you can bank and then have proceeds.
We find that out by working with the fund advisors, we have two fund advisors, Gus Bishop and Jean Snow. So those are the fund advisors that I work closely with, and of course, Dr. Ellis works with as well. Once we have a formula that, after working with the fund advisors, after working with the board, after showing this formula to the faculty, because I've talked to the faculty about an opportunity to gather their input as well, once we feel we've involved the stakeholders, and we have a formula that should meet the vision that's set forth by Cleo, then I'm going to propose to the board that we submit that formula to their board for consideration. So, the short answer is, the earliest possible graduating class that could be involved in this would be the class of 2014. But it may not be the class of 2014, and honestly, I don't know if we'll know that in the next sixty days, next ninety days. Like I said, I've got a target for myself to have a workable, defensible, and fair formula by Thanksgiving. I'm really trying to hit Halloween if I can, because I know there's going to be some interplay between our board and their board, and the earlier the better, at least to begin that discussion, so that if there's things that need to be adjusted, that we can do that.
So would it be fair right now to say, we really can't answer that question, and probably until at the earliest January, and then?
I think that would be a pretty fair assessment, because that would allow us at least to have more fact-finding, it would allow us to have more focused discussions on this topic. I know I've already talked about it with Dr. Ellis, and, you know, the marching orders from the foundation are very clear, preschool first. And we need to see a really robust investment in, and a really supported and a really, I guess, well-thought-out and concise developmental process to building that robust preschool for our youngest learners. And after that, then we can consider these four other things. And so, as we work through that, as we provide some early benchmarks for our new two classrooms, and obviously, as we work with Head Start, we're going to have some assessment, we're going to have some growth by mid-year, as we administer some mid-year benchmark assessment. I believe we're going to have a robust, and we're going to have three classrooms running very, very well. We'll have some assessment, some student growth and performance data to go back to the board, and that's kind of what we heard Dr. Ellis mention tonight. Mid-year, we're going to hear a summary report on the first, you know, the first half of the year and all the successes in the program, and based on those successes, we're going to expect the second half of the year's grant to be funded. And Cleo built the funding mechanism that way, and those are the marching orders she has assigned to the foundation staff. And what they have to do is they have to make sure that when the dollars are allocated, that we come back and complete the loop. We request the dollars, define the program, the money comes. The completion of the loop is to show that, yes, the money did what we said it was going to do. And I appreciate that, because it's not just, it's not just money coming in with no accountability. There's significant accountability, which is very good, because it really makes us be very pragmatic and think these things through very carefully. What that does, though, is it does slow the process down, as we really do everything very thoroughly. So, I think the best answer would be, we should know a great deal more, hopefully, around the holidays.
But then, is it the foundation's responsibility to announce this as well? We're not kind of, I don't want to say at liberty to broadcast this out.
Right, the foundation's responsibility is all of marketing, which they have begun, and so they have started that with the Traverse City Record Eagle. They had the reporter call me and call Sue for quotes. And so our agreement is, they are in charge of all marketing and promotionals. When they do and make those releases, we are allowed to, of course, re-release the story and put it on the website, and, you know, release it out on this, or Facebook, or the Twitter, or what have you. And, yes, so, you're exactly right. Is that a, that's not probably the answer, that's the best answer I have at this point, but, and that's the answer.
But I guess I would encourage the people who do have seniors this year that it may not be a possibility. You know, I mean, I guess that would kind of be the message.
I would encourage them to, of course, you know. I would encourage them to, of course, you know, be making prudent, you know, financial planning decisions.
Don't plan. Yeah, don't plan.
And, and even, even if this is up and running, let's say in time for next August, September, or July, August, when, when, you know, deposits are, are being expected by colleges and universities. As you look at the five areas of funding, and as you look at the primary funding allocations for preschool and, and early childhood programming, and as you look at the number of graduates, it's, it's, we're not talking, I don't believe any of us are thinking about funds that are going to pay somebody's four-year college degree. We're talking about supplemental funding that will help, we're not talking about, you know, ten, twenty thousand per student per year, because the numbers simply aren't there to support that. You know, if, if you did that in the first year, you'd have to cut that in half and more by the second year, when the next graduating class comes. So thirty becomes sixty, becomes ninety, becomes a hundred and twenty. It's a, that's a daunting figure, and, and that's the other tricky part of that formula. You know, we, we as a board have some philosophical discussions to make, and, and that's only one of the five areas that we're talking about. What we have to think about, are we talking about a two-year degree? Are we talking about providing support for year one of a two-year degree? Year one of a four-year?
Or just the plan that we don't...
Right, or, or are we just providing supports for extending education, whether it's at a technical school, or, or, you know, a craft school, trade school, culinary program? You know, we, we...
Textbooks.
We, right, we, we have, you know, we have a lot of things to discuss in that area, and that's just one of the other four. So, exciting times, really is.
One of the other things I wanted to point out is that the, the annual conference for the Michigan Association of School Boards is in Lansing, and it's October twenty-fourth to twenty-seventh. And Melanie and Greg and I have all been to this, and it's an excellent, excellent workshop. Ben, would you disseminate the information, so that Sarah and Keith will get it also?
If you'd like, I can scan that, and then email it to everybody.
That would be perfect, yeah.
And get it to all the board members.
Yeah, one of the things that happened there that Melanie and I were really interested in, they have awards for outstanding programs at schools. And we have some outstanding programs that are unusual. And I, I really would like to see us do that, Melanie and I have talked about that several times, that, you know, we, we have the opportunity to participate in this. And Shelley, would you look into that, or Ben, would you?
Sure.
See if we can. What were some of the programs we talked about, Melanie, that we thought? What was the backpack program?
The backpack program.
And I've got a whole list at home.
I know, and I just can't...
What we talked about wasn't the, it seems like...
I've seen the program of all the other schools.
The stuff where we have the greenhouse.
The hoop house.
The hoop house, right. Maybe buying local initiative?
I think that was one.
So, but if, you know, if either of you, or Greg had said he's going to be in Lansing during that time, anyway, it's just, it's really, you know, particularly for new board members, it's an excellent, excellent way to become familiar with what boards should look like, and what we should be doing, and... Okay. Are there any other guest comments?
I just have another question about the numbers. How many transferred out, how many came? Do you know?
That I don't have, right off the top of my head. I believe, because we're, gosh, I know the, the net total is down three, so...
And thirteen, thirteen of those were seniors leaving that...
Right, 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 I understand, I was curious.
It's in the twenties, or high teens of...
It's close to equal again.
Yeah.
It's close to that balance of as many left came.
We can get that, yeah. We can get that.
Yeah, we can get it, yeah. Maybe for the next board meeting, I have that whole business.
How many out? How many in?
And maybe where they went, if we have that available.
We do, yeah, we do.
Somebody has it right now, I guess.
So how many out, and where? And then how many in?
And where they came from.
They came from as far as Jakarta, this year.
That too.
Jakarta and Alaska, it's pretty exciting for them. And if you haven't had a chance to meet our exchange student from Indonesia, she is extremely well-spoken and quite precocious, she...
She'll be at the game on Friday.
You would not know, if you just met her in the hallway, that she wasn't from Michigan. Her English is outstanding.
Now, I heard we had two exchange students, am I wrong there?
Ellsworth passed.
Oh, Ellsworth, okay.
He's playing on football, so, right, right.
Okay, yeah, that's right, okay, okay. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll let your team motion to a adjournment at eight oh seven.
Make that motion.
All right, second. Congress is safer.
Hi.